Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/49countynewsTV.
Hello, my name is Bo. I'm the manager here at Splash in a Flash, Frank's Automotive, and Frank's Quality Housing LLC.
Since 2009, Frank's Automotive.
Splash in a Flash.
And Frank's Quality Housing LLC has provided local professional services for our community.
Services such as auto detailing.
Mechanic work.
1995 oil change.
24/7 towing and roadside assistance.
Pressure washing.
Ask about our VIP membership.
We would like to thank you for your business.
Call us at 205-921-2378.
Located at 115 Pike Trail Hamilton, Alabama.
Like us on Facebook, Splash in a Flash LLC.
Okay, I believe it's time to call our meeting door with a three second each of you to break tonight and get out of this weather. Does it come our way tonight, do any of us? Before we have our invitation or our pledge, I'd like to make a couple of announcements that have come to my attention. Other than the possible hazards inside in our community tonight, the flooding of our streets and roads due to this intensive rain, I advise that all citizens take precautions as needed to watch for flood areas that might be hazardous to your health or welfare. Also, on March the 2nd and 3rd is the date set for our Jay Brown Arts Festival, and they'll be held this year at the Tundeby Cooperative near I-22. And the March 2nd and 3rd dates are standing dates for that for this year, and we'd invite all the public to come out and enjoy the arts festival. And also, we've made aware that the Hamilton Career Center at 1481 Military Street South will be hosting a job and job training on February 27th from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. And if you're going to attend that meeting, they are asking for you to RSVP for your attendance at 921-5672. And your extension you're being dialed in addition is 855-22 or 855-24. That's at the Hamilton Career Center, and that's a job and job training for February the 27th, 1:00 p.m. to 3:00. And residents will be arriving at that meeting. Okay, now let's stand this down, and we'll have an invitation and pledge. I'd rather be kind to you than to be thankful in our hearts to be able to have your blessings every day. Lord, we thank you for everything you can do for us as a collective. We ask you to be a part of this charity, keep us safe and honest. We ask you, Lord, to watch over our citizens during this drought in town and road. This is my prayer, God's name.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got item one on our agenda, right? It's a recommendation to approve the minutes of the last council meeting held on February the 4th, 2019. And the motion to approve it. Jean made the motion, we need a second.
How's second?
Any second, all in favor of approving that minutes? Thank you. The second item of business is a recommendation to renew the annual municipal site membership for the City of Hamilton with AirMed Care Network for a total of $21,855. And this contract will be good from March the 3rd, 2019 through March the 3rd, 2020. Everybody made a motion and did a second. Third made a second, all in favor of that? Good, thank you for that. I think this provides some excellent protection for our citizens and our community. Now, I understand that same organization, AirMed, can give you coverage throughout the United States for an additional $35 for families, so if you're interested, contact AirMed and they can take care of you for a necessary flight wherever you are, including taking air ambulance if you're somewhere and get hurt, and they can bring you home. And this is very important, and this budget is extremely expensive. The third recommendation is to pay the State Department revenue $11,305 out of the general fund to complete the purchase of the 2019 15 passenger van for the Hamilton Senior Center. The 5310 program grant application for capital assistance under the Federal Transit Administration Enhanced Mobility of Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities Transportation Program as awarded the City of Hamilton this payment. The total cost of the vehicle will be $56,524. However, through the grant, the city will only have to pay $11,305. And we made a motion to... All in favor? Wade made a motion, we need a second.
How's second?
Second, all in favor of finishing the table of the vote? Thank you very much. And we'll try to decide soon what to do, as soon as we take the meeting, what to do with this, and maybe get part of our $11,000 back, and sell that thing to keep it moving. Our item four is a recommendation to repeal a previous motion made on January 22nd, 2019 meeting. At this meeting, the motion was passed to increase the pay of the chief operators and grade three and four operators at the wastewater and water treatment plants, as well as grade one foreman and grade one and regular construction crew employees of the Hamilton Water Department. Concerns over face scale adjustments being made after this meeting, but not mentioning the wording of the actual meeting as well, as confusion over the actual number of employees who would receive this pay increased has prompted this motion to be repealed. I'd like to repeal that and add a new motion to be voted on here tonight. So I'm asking for a motion to repeal the January 22nd matters. How much? Jean made a motion, we need a second. We made second, all in favor of repealing? All opposed? Got board one, repeal. Now, we'd like to make the recommendation to approve pay increases for chief operators and grade three and four operators at the wastewater and water treatment plants. Also included in this pay increase will be the grade one foreman and the grade one certified construction crew employees of the Hamilton Water Department. No raises will be given to non-certified employees. And we made a motion to pass that new proposal.
How make that move?
Jean made a motion, we need a second. All in favor? All opposed? Board one. A recommendation to approve the following face scale that coincides with the previously approved pay increase for the City of Hamilton Water Department is as follows. There's a hiring for the non-certified employees started at 15, 40 per hour and topped out at 16, 65 if they remain un-certified. Grade one certified will start at 15, 40 and top out at $18 once they are certified and have their five years of service in. At the water treatment, wastewater treatment plant, new hires can hire in at 15, 90 per hour and topped out $21.30 when they put in their four years and are topped out. Chief operators and foreman are $1 above the top out pay. That would be the recommendation for the new face scale. Make a motion on that.
How make that move?
Jean made a motion, we need a second. Make a second, all in favor? All opposed?
I'm waiting to hear and make sure that all of this was legal from the beginning before I vote to change anything, so that's why I voted to vote on all three of these.
If you find out you're doing something illegal, we'll correct.
It's illegal, it won't be... You know if I do that.
Okay, that's all I have on the agenda tonight. Is there any other business to come before the council tonight? Mr. Lewis, if you'll come to the podium and address this, please.
I think I already know me.
Yes, sir.
I live at 275 Ice Wood Avenue in Hamilton by Rexdale Creek. I have... I have a preliminary agreement here and everything through the EPA. And this was just come out of Wade Williams before he left office and was in the process of getting Mr. Elliot's approval on a piece of paper that where we could go ahead, or the EPA could go ahead and redo the floodgate down there on the Ford Mill Pond Dam. And also dredge the Rexdale Creek all the way up to the right of way of the State Department. And the State Department agreed that they clean out from under the bridge on each side and everything if the creek was drenched down to the right of way on both sides. And we got a flood tonight, and you can come by about 10:00 or 12:00 p.m. tonight, and you can see where the water will be. Last time it flooded, flooded real bad. Oh, candy was over there, and you was over there. And it got in my basement.
Yes, sir.
Five inches. I didn't call, oh, Sir Pro up there to come and clean it out for me or anything like that because they gave me too much on my estimate, what it would cost, over $3,500. And I said, "Well, I've got a shop back that'll back water" or anything like that. So I just squeezed it out as much as I could, took my shop back, and got the rest of it myself. But I wound up redoing, pulling the carpet out and the padding in the rec room downstairs, and redoing some of the fascia board in the garage part. I haven't kept up with the exact cost or anything like that, but that's... I mean, what I want you to do, I want you to pass these around. That was before the creek was dredged, when Russell Hill, the mayor was Mr. Mays at that time. He come up there and looked at it, and he said, "Yeah, we need to get something done." You gotta hold Russell Hill, and Russell said, "Yeah, I can get right on that, I'm not booked up, I don't have anything urgent right now, get right on that." And I told Mr. Mays, I said, "If the city hadn't got the funds to pay for it, I'll pay for it myself." Russell Hill charged the city, if I'm not mistaken, don't quote me, but if I'm not mistaken, he dredged that ditch all the way from the Lindsay Washhole to the 43 Bridge as far as the state would let him come for $1,800. He had a trackhoe. Now, one of your councilmen, before he was elected commissioner, Mr. Cockburn told me that he had got with y'all and finally talked she into buying a back, a trackhoe to do that job with him.
We built a trackhoe.
Okay. And I sent Wade...
This picture before the dredging, right?
That's before the dredging. This is after the dredging.
Go ahead, Mr. Lewis, I'm sorry.
Also, also the first flooding after the dredging. And I got with Mr. Mayor, you, Mr. Page, got with you, and you come aboard and informed you what was going on, it's there in that paper, but I didn't mention your name. All of this correspondence and everything was with Wade Williams, and it was all approved and everything through the EPA, and they was gonna do the whole thing without any expense because the... He said that Mr. Ford had already breached the state law that refers to that any obstacle that is blocking a creek, it has to have a spillway, which it's got a spillway, and has to have a floodgate, which it had a floodgate. And when Mr. Ford used that lake water for his meal, he would close the floodgates and it would turn his, turn his wheel to operate his machines. This was, this was, this was flood with that life right there, that's the big ones there in my, my dwelling is included in this one. Well, Mr. Ford, he, he left that floodgate open when he wasn't running that mail. That was state requirements. Well, when he passed away and left it to his descendants and everything, well, somebody closed the floodgates, and you can't find the big round wheel like that that you put on, on the spindle, it's an inch, about an inch diameter spindle that goes down to the gears that opens and closes floodgates. All of that is rusted up, and the floodgates is rusted up. The EPA guy said that that would have to be removed, and he would put it back to where you'd still have a pond up there. He said, "I'll even clean the pond out." Now, this is the state telling me over the phone, and he also told Wade Williams that. And Mr. Mayor never did speak to Podinsky. Mr. Podinsky was the one that handled it, where's his name at? He's the one that handled all of it. Eric Podinsky right there, and that's his phone number. And Mr. Page, he, he never did get in touch with the people. Well, no, I'm gonna take that back. You told me that you did call Mr. Podinsky, and he told, I think he told you on the phone what, what I wrote down on paper. And you said, you said that you would get Mr. Elliot's approval, signature on a piece of paper. The EPA said that they would not go in on anybody's property and clean debris or anything like that without approval from me. He said, "Although we can't, if it's causing destruction of people's property and damaging, damaging the waterways and everything like that," he said, "we can go ahead and do it regardless because that's a state law that you cannot block a free..." So, Mr. Page told me he'd get with Mr. Eugene.
Elliot.
Elliot.
I know that he did.
And you did?
Yes, and he said, "I'll give you verbal permission, but I don't wanna sign any paperwork."
All right. So you should, you should've got back to the EPA and told them that he was not going to sign any kind of paper.
They really didn't care what we did in the first place.
That, that's not, that's not the point. A legal point is.
Yes, sir, I understand. We gotta have a signature.
That's right, because otherwise, he could come in with a lawsuit.
Yes, sir.
And wipe the city out, ever who, ever who dropped the case up either way with the big league.
I had the pond drained and had the free flooding, but the citizens took it on themselves, took on the military, and go back and breathe that up after I had it taken out.
All right, they broke the law. Then you should've called the sheriff and had every one of them arrested, carried them to court, and the judge would've fined them and everything, and that, that'd put a stop to that. And that's what you should've done.
I didn't see them rebuild.
If I'd been mayor, that's exactly what I'd have done.
I didn't see them rebuild, but I couldn't hold my finger, so you put the dam back, and that's why I had it drained, which was re-damped.
Well, I know you went down, I know you went down and cleaned off the spillway at the top. There's a tree, there's a dead tree there, right straight with the spillway on it, and a lot of brush against it and everything. I know you, you cleaned that off, you told me you did, went down there and looked at it for sale. But that didn't eliminate the problem. The problem is still there. You could clean that dam out, it's on both sides, as clean as this floor here, and clean out the floodgates, and it still wouldn't eliminate the problem. Those floodgates are, are closed shut, and with this water, with this force of water and everything, there's not an open space, and the floodgate's big enough to take care of it. So it's gonna back up.
You're right.
And it's gonna go over the overflow when it gets so far, and that's exactly what happened. It was going over the overflow when it got in that basin. This right here, it'll get in that basin. I guarantee you that, the water's not gonna hold it back. He's, he's gonna, he's gonna teach us a lesson.
What were those floodgates? I think the little...
They're in the dam. No, they're in the dam. See, when he had that dam built, he built those floodgates in the dam with the control of open, open and closing for his meal, which that's, that was, that was...
But what's, who is it that won't help the floodgates? When the water comes in, the bubbles are gone, it's all rusted in, this whole thing's not come out. But if, if the floodgates were opened up, would that, would it dump fluid on down or would all the water go on down?
All the water go on down.
Is that one of the problems in the floodgates?
They're closed.
I say, if they were opened up, is that one of the problems?
Yeah.
They need to be open?
Hey, the overflow, don't mess with that, that's the main part of the dam. That, that has nothing to do with it. The floodgates is what takes care of the stream.
But why can't we do away with the floodgates? Can't, if that's the problem? It's what's flooding? I, I don't understand. That's probably what others do that are rotting, with the problem, but I've done that it on.
Well, I tell what, I tell you what Mr. Podinsky told me. Well, I think I've already told. He said, "The state law has the right to go in there and open that up because the water is not open enough that the fish can migrate."
Yeah, I heard that.
And he went, he come, he had, had his field people to come over with a helicopter and everything and take pictures of the dam and everything, the whole works. And he says, "That is illegal, it should be open because there's no wheel." Like he said, "I didn't see no mill wheel, I said, 'No, it, it rotted and fell down years and years ago.'" But I said, "His, his descendants closed that floodgate, and, and it's been closed since." But they've been so many streams coming into that creek. Same way with Williams's creek. They've been so many streams coming into that creek till the dredging it is okay. That's fine, but it will not do, it will not handle a flyish flood. It will not handle a flyish flood.
What you're saying?
Those floodgates, those floodgates has got to be removed and opened up.
So what you're saying is, is the floodgates problem, not the digging it out or whatever it would take? The floodgates make you think of removing, which they're not doing any good anyway.
Well, the floodgates is concrete. And it looks like a maze. We've seen, it looks like a maze. And in that maze is, is doors that, that is opening and closed by the gear, gearbox up on the... Well, if you walk up there, the gearbox's not there anymore.
Oh, that's...
The gears is there, standing up because, but they're just a clump of ruts, that's all the obvious.
They're not working anymore. Had worked the gears here.
I know, sure.
Well, I'd like to help you, Mr. Lewis. I, I, I felt hard to know if, if I can't get the president on the signature, I felt hard to know, did I go over his head, is that how I go?
Uh, you would have. If I was the mayor...
And he's still there now.
If I was the mayor for the people, with the people, and I can get everybody up and around through there, if, if you wanna, if you wanna petition, I'll get a petition. But now, these people out, these people that lives down in there and everything on that last flood, when it got up in my basement, they got water in their houses too. But they didn't open their mouth, they didn't say a word because they liked that lake there. What it does is it improves the property, it's higher. I mean, they can get more money for it. Because, hey, we got a lake there, you can fish and sit out there and barbecue and everything else.
Uh-huh, so...
But, but that, that, that's still not, that's still, for the benefit of a few and the, and the, uh, uh, damage that you're doing for other people. Uh, you went up, you went up and looked at, uh... Trying to think of his name now, but we went to school with him. Louis McLean's where?
Yes, Joyce.
You went up and looked in her house?
Yes, sir.
And you talked with her son?
Yes, sir.
And he said, "It ain't bothering me, and it gonna do a thing." That's what he told me. But he says, "I can get the state and get the city to dredge that creek or do anything that I want them to do." I said, "Well, do it." He said, "Well, it don't need it, it ain't bothering me." But it destroyed his mother's home, where she at now, she's in the high rises. He spent her money that she had put back for retirement and everything, for medicine and doctor bills and stuff. He rebuilt that house inside and out. You've seen it, it's just like brand new. And the last flood, the last flood that we had got up in again, but not, but not waste half. The, the first, the, the, uh... The time I'm talking about, it got to my basement. It, it was running in her window, her window stops. That's how high it was up, because I drove around and drove down there and stopped and looked, and the water was running in her window stops. Am I right?
Sure was. Going, going inside the house with the window.
That's when I talked to her son, I don't, I can't think of his name. But he's just as stubborn and bullheaded as, as Louis was. But anyway, he told his mama, says, "Mama, I'm gonna clean it out, clean it inside and everything, put new floors in, new walls, old works and everything like that." "No, I don't want you to." She give him the power of attorney and everything, she turned everything over to him and all that. He says, "I'm gonna do it anyway." And he spent her money to do it. Then here come, here come this last flood. And it got in on the floors. It didn't get as high as it did, it destroyed all of her furniture, her bedding and everything. It destroyed everything in that house. But when it got in at this time, she told her, told her son, says, "I'm gone." And she went to the high rises. And that's where she's at.
I've got my instruction sheets here from the Corps of Engineers. They've told me what I've gotta do to be able to dredge and clean this, uh, creek. I've gotta get, uh, figures on, uh, how many cubic yards of silt will be taking out. They won't let me cut the bushes on the banks of the, of the creek when I do this. It's got to be silt, I only remove them. They say that the bushes are needed for erosion problems that, that are caused by removal, so they won't let me actually remove the bushes.
They won't let you cut them? Do you leave the stump?
We might.
They won't let you cut them?
We might trim them.
I, I think, I think, I think that, I think that right there...
This came out of Homewood, uh, the Homewood office. I wrote Washington to get my permit, and then they sent me back my instruction sheet. And it's probably gonna be, it's gonna take engineering just to be able to get a permit to do this work for the dredging and, and channeling.
Oh, I'll be glad. And you see, Mayor Mays and, and, uh, Russell Hill, they come to an agreement and everything, and he went up there and sets his, his, uh, track hole in it, uh, Lindsay Wash Hole, and he cleans it out. There's no state, nobody, anybody, he didn't go through nobody.
Would probably...
But you better, you better look in, look into your city. Look into your city, uh, what you can do and what you can't do.
Well...
The mayor is in control of the city that he's the mayor of. And if you're not, if you're not, well...
Lord. Uh, I, I'm really sympathetic to the situation, uh, Mr. Lewis.
But how, how long's it gonna take you to get a permit? Five years, ten years? Maybe he might not even get one, do you know that? Because they can prolong that and say, "Well, we had this come up, this come out, this immersion, this is more important, so we'll get you, we'll get you, we'll put it on the bill and everything."
Liam, Liam and, uh, Street Foreman recently had a discussion about the creek with the DOT, local DOT. And, uh, you remember that discussion?
I do.
They said...
They pretty much advised us to stay out of it, because we acted.
We talked to them two weeks ago about this problem and their solution. And it's not that we don't think about this almost every day. It's, it's not, the problem's not going away real easy.
All right. Now, you turn around and you write an official letter, write an official letter back to them and everything. Take it through, through Mr. Hunt there. Let it be official and everything, says, "Okay, what you have done, you have stopped the progress of Hamilton, Alabama, in Marion County. You are tying my hands behind me from industry coming in here. Hey, they, they don't, anybody wanna come in here with this town like it is? You think you've got a beautiful town? Hey, I've been told so many times by people out of town and everything, I've never seen a trashed or a town than Hamilton. I said, "What do you mean?" You drove around and said, "Yeah, I drove around it 'cause I was looking to move back here a little bit." And says, "There's no way. It's trashy. They don't, nobody won't come here unless a business comes in. These people that has come in, they're hard local people. They're not bringing those people in that's gonna buy houses and live here. They're, they're hard local people. You're not gonna get a, a manufacturing company to come in here that will, that will employ seven hundred or a thousand people simply because they can't find a place in town that's fit to buy, fit to live in. It's because of the surroundings, not the buildings, not the homes that they're looking at. I've had, I've had, I don't know how many people in my life been swirled to it. Now, I don't want her to swear to it, but anyway...
Mr. Wilson's story, we wonder.
I've had, I don't know how many people, I'm gonna say at least a half a dozen, and I've been right?
Thank you even more.
That really wanted my house. They said, "It, it's lovely. It's exactly what I'm looking for." And I said, and the price I was asking them says, "Why are you asking that little for it?" Says, "This house worth more than that." I said, "Yeah, it cost you three hundred and forty thousand dollars to build it. I've already had it appraised and everything by three builders. The price of material today and everything." But I said, "Uh, it's too big for us, we're up in ages, we don't need it, it's a lot to keep up. We want a downsized." And says, "Well, where are you going?" I said, "Right there next door." I said, "That's a fourteen hundreds bar foot house. This one here is a three thousand." And I said, "We don't need it. We need the downsized." Well, they were satisfied with that answer and everything. And, uh... One couple, they was really interested in it. And she looked at it and says, "I like this, and I really like it." And I said, "Well, why don't you buy it?" He said, the man, I can't think of those things now, I, I wish I'd have wrote, wrote them down and brought them with me. I'd just show you. He said, "Mr. Lewis, I tell you..." He says, "Out there on the corner," and he says, and this, this was after Mr. Hawks or Hawking. His name's Hawking in it, or is it Hawks? It moved in across the dits there and put in this business, this freight hauling business. Has it got a business license? By the way, that's what I wanted to ask you.
I want to check.
You told me that last time I talked to you about it. I ain't got his name, but his last name's Hawkins. And I will tell you, I will tell you one thing. I will tell you one thing, he was run out of Lamar County for doing the same thing in, in a, in a, uh...
Subdivision.
Yeah, in a subdivision.
He's got a hot shop trucking business, don't he?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he's got, he's got these, uh, gooseneck trailers sitting out there, and he does his mechanic work on Sunday. Got his air range, it's going all day on Sunday. Sunday's nothing to him, it's just another workday.
That's amazing, I saw it out there.
If he don't, if he don't have a license for a business, and you haven't, you haven't changed the, the, uh, uh... ordinances.
We don't, we don't change any.
Okay. But then you'd, you'd have to change it, change that one little spot there for a business just like you did for, I can't name his name over there on, on Lover's Lane, that put his business downstairs and he lives upstairs, that sells ammunition and stuff like that. That should've never been done. Now, the mayor before Wade Bril, Williams come in, did that.
It has been a long time.
Did it as a favor.
Been a long time ago.
He did that as a favor. He wasn't thinking about the people. Hey, you're just like President Trump. You work for us, the people here in Hamilton, Alabama. And this is the county seat. The county seat is the head of the, of the county, Marion, Marion County. And you're, you're the boss, and we have to look to you to get things done, to keep this town right, keep it straight and everything to where people have a decent place to live and jobs and stuff like that. But it's never gonna happen. Now, you're looking in, you're looking in, I know you're looking into what he's left now. I know you're looking into the waterway that my brother tried to get back twenty years ago. You're looking into that to get it done. Well, you can get it done, but you'll have to prove to the state, you'll have to prove to the state that you're fit for a company to come in here, manufacturing company to come in here. You'll have to prove it.
I get worried about us running out of water, Mr. Lewis, in the future. And the buddy hatch is our one source now for water, and...
I realize that.
I'm scared that it won't be sufficient in the times to come. That's why I'm on the head of water up there to draw from when we...
Well, well...
I'll be gone when that time comes, but there'll be a future for Hamilton, Alabama. And I, I'm not a young man by any means, I'm seventy-two years old.
But a lot of it...
A lot of people are in their grave at this year, at this age. And I'm trying to be a servant to the community. Everything I do is not real easy, Mr. Lewis. Uh, I do a few things you're not aware of.
Hey, I know you, I know you've got a tough job, and, and it's, and it's, uh...
Asking for...
And you have to make some decisions that you ruffle feathers, and you even make your friends a little bit, well, why do you wanna do that? Yeah, I know that, but you, you was elected to the job, and you're in the driver's seat, and you, and you need to explain to those people, say, "Hey, look, I can't build this town, I can't get certain things in here if I don't get this, if I don't get this done because it won't, nobody wanna come here." How many people have you lost, how many people have you lost in the past three years?
Well, we're gonna do a census right away and we'll get it real quick.
You're gonna find out it's close to three hundred people, about two hundred and seventy, eighty people that has moved and left, not died out, not died, but I'm talking about moved, has left. Why? They just don't wanna live and put up with the trash and garbage that's around over this town. You've got rental, I've got nothing against a manufacturing home. I lived in them, that's my first home, was a manufacturing home. But I put it where it was legal and I put it where it was required to put. You've got people here that's, uh, throwing trash on lots, places, and they're renting them. They're not living in them, I've got nothing against that. I've got amendments on, on the, uh... I've gotta get with, who's over the, who's over the board right now, the, uh, the, uh...
Zoning?
Zoning board.
Troy Moore.
I've got to get with him and you and make a date. I've got amendments that I want changed on that zoning. And if y'all don't agree with it or anything like that, well, then you just shut this city down to ground. I'm not against people living in mobile homes. It states in there that you, that you gotta have a, a eight-foot by eight-foot porch at the front door and a four-by-four at the back door. Well, that, that's really not okay. okay. You go look at some of these mobile homes that they pulled in and everything, they, they built porches all the way across the front of it, they got it all, uh, fenced in at the bottom, you can't see under it no further or anything like that. They actually look like houses. When you drop, drive by and look, you, you think it's a house, but it's not, it's a mobile home. And they've done what's right. And they're living in them. And I, I'm, I don't, I don't, I'm not against nobody living in a mobile home on their property, and they live in that mobile home. But to buy one and set it on a piece of property to rent, to get three or four hundred dollars a month to put in your pocket, or go out here and blow it to, at the wind and everything, and trash move into it, and they just trashed the place up. I know you got a, I know you got a, uh.
You talking about mobile homes now?
Yeah.
Mobile home board?
Ordinances.
Yeah.
Yeah. Where you see it, you don't, uh, what I've done on F A, uh, F, uh, HFA, is that it? HFA Home. FHF, I've done away with the rental property on mobile homes. If you can't live in it, if you own the property, property in the mobile home, you have to live in it. You cannot rent it. You cannot rent it to somebody else to live there, because they will not keep it up, they won't take care of it, it'll become a junk pile. And I think that's nothing but right. That, that would eliminate, that'd eliminate these trashy buildings and mobile homes that's sitting around all around Hamilton. That's nothing but a sore eye every time you drive by them. And people that's coming in town looking around, they see it, they drive around, they don't just, they don't just come to the Chamber of Commerce and say, hey, what's available here in Hamilton? Well, what's available is, is the people that has got real estate that they bought and redone and everything, and it's for sale. People like me never see them, because they don't. The people that owns these houses and everything, they buy them, refurbish them and everything till they're livable, and then they sell them. And the way they sell them is by going to the Chamber of Commerce to find out who's coming in and who's not. I don't, I don't do that. But now, I'm telling, I'm.
I understand.
I know, I know I'm a loo-, I'm loose and I'm talking, but what I'm talking about is problems in this city.
Right.
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about you must, you must live this way and live that way, but if you've got, if you've got rules and regulations, people should abide by it.
That's true.
And they're not. And you should enforce them, and you're not enforcing them. I got one above me and one below me there. Now, the one above me up there, when he redid that garage building for his daughter-in-law to live in it, and she is pregnant, gonna have a baby, I don't know if she's had it yet or not. But anyway, the health department jumped on that. I mean, they jumped on it big time. They moved in there, they told him and says, you cannot mechanic here in this garage no more, 'cause you've made that a residence upstairs. You cannot mechanic here no more in this building. But he still does it out there in the yard.
No.
Somebody drive up and they want someone to love something does, he, he works on it in the yard, but he's not supposed to. The ordinance says, no. And he's got, he's got, what was the last time we came in? Thirty fowl, chickens, ducks, whatever, he's got thirty of them. He got, he got rid of this bull that he was fattening out, because the health department told him about that when they come and check the building. And they said, when you get through with this building and everything, I'll be back. And they did, they come back and inspected it and everything.
Wonderful.
And they told him that he had to get rid of that animal, because that was illegal. And, uh, and they also told him about the chickens, but he hadn't got rid of the chickens. And this guy, this guy next up, now listen.
Mr. Lewis, let me, let me say a word.
But I, I just want these people to hear. I, see, they don't, they don't hear what me and you talking about, but you don't tell.
But let me say a word to you. I'm gonna put you on the agenda. See, we have an agenda for these meetings. If you're gonna present something, you're supposed to be notes, notify us twenty-four hours.
Okay.
But if you wanna come back and speak to us on, just try to limit it to two items, where you can handle it about five minutes each, and then, but say, we're gonna go on tonight with all these problems, it's gonna be thirty minutes or an hour down the road.
Well, this one item that I brought tonight, excuse me.
On tonight's agenda, but we'll let you speak. But next time, get on the agenda, the time that we'll know to put you on there and what you're gonna speak about, we'll give you time. But let's keep it to about two items per visit, and we'll work through these things and talk with you about them. But.
Well.
We won't solve them all here tonight, but we can start.
Well, from what you told me, you can't solve, you can't solve this flood, flood problem anyway. You, you just, you just told me.
I don't know that I can.
Who's that company, who, who's that that told you that you couldn't clean out that?
Department of Transportation.
Department of Transportation?
Yes, sir.
Has got the authority to tell you, you cannot clean out water.
No, they just advised us not to get in there without the permits to deal with.
Well, okay, all right. So it's all you gotta do.
Let me tell you what to say. They said, we can come dip out around our bridge, but he said, it settles back in, the next rain comes, he said, it doesn't do a bit of good. He said, you know, we, we can come over there and dig around that bridge and clear, uh, that out and dip, dip it out, but he said, it'll settle right back in, the next rain comes. Did he not say that to us?
I did.
And he said, that's why we haven't made that effort.
But he won't play to you.
Oh, no, not without the co-er's permission. And he said, you'd be, you'd be putting yourself liable to go ahead and just do the work. And he said, you better be careful without a permit if you.
Well, he better be careful, because EPA's gonna crawl all over him. And I think EPA's got, has got to say so.
We.
They got, they got.
We know it's a big problem, Mr. Lewis. We're, we're, we're always welcome at our meetings.
You just told me, you just told me that, uh, there's nothing y'all can do.
No, sir, we.
That be satisfied with what you got, and if you don't like where you're living or can't live where you're at, get out, move out.
Well, we'd never say.
Well, I can't burn it, because that's against the law. The insurance wouldn't let me do that. I'd wind up in trouble. Uh, of course, my pictures, that. No, no, all, all the pictures, I want them back, 'cause them's not gonna do you any good, 'cause you're not gonna get nothing done anyway. I didn't see that. So you can just kiss, you can kiss your city goodbye with getting any industry in here, and quit lying to the people, quit telling them you gonna do this and do that. You can't do it, because you don't have an environment to sell to nobody. If I was a multi-billionaire and I wanted to move a plant in here and set up a fifteen hundred employee plant and everything, and I come and looked around over this city, I'd say, I'm sorry, but I've got to find another location. Even if you had that, even if you had that waterway up there and had plenty of water, I'd say, man, your city's too filthy for me to live in, and I'm gonna have to live here.
Well, we thank you for coming, Mr. Lewis. I'm sorry you feel the way you do, and I'm gonna try to prove you wrong on, on your point you made. I think the city can grow, and I think we'll have an environment to grow in.
The only way.
I want you to stick around and see this happen, I really do.
Well, I'm, I'll, I'll be eighty-five in May, and I might, I might hang around a couple of more years, I don't know.
I'm, I'm planning on you growing old. I call a hungry dog, so I'm planning on you being a hungry when you die.
But.
I, I'm gonna.
But I, I tell you what, when, when, when there's a.
Mr. Lewis, I've never lived anywhere but Hamilton, Alabama. I don't ever wanna move away from Hamilton, so I do want good things for Hamilton. And, and I'm not some stranger that's moved into town. I was raised right out there on Nineteen Highway, and I've been living here since I was eighteen, I'm seventy-two. And I don't wanna move away from Hamilton, and I still love it. I think it's a beautiful city.
Well, you're okay, you're okay, you're situated.
I'm not saying we don't have some trashy places, but can you believe that?
Your, your place is not trashy.
Can you believe that people wanna live?
Your neighborhood's not trashy.
Can you believe?
You won't lie, you won't lie.
Can you believe that people wanna live the way they do? I can't believe it. I mean, I go, I got, I've stood on these porches and asked these people, clean up your place. I said, I'm, I'm, this is a friendly visit, I'm asking you to do that. And I said, the next time I come back, I might not be this pleasant, but I'm asking you, clean up your place. I've stood on the porches and, and we've, we've been toward the yard, there's stuff out there that they could sell for scrapyard and get money.
Yeah, I know, I know.
It's just collecting rust.
I know you did that on Bobo, because you had to, you got a petition, and I signed it.
Yes, sir.
You got a petition.
Yes, sir.
And otherwise, you wasn't a budged, you wasn't a moved, you wasn't a done a thing. You was forced to. And Bobo knew by the ordinance that he had to, or either hook to them trailers and move them.
That's right.
Get them out of there.
I personally asked him to do what he did, and he, he complied with.
Go back over there and look at them now.
He complied with part of it.
He's rented them, he's rented, rented them to people, it's nothing but trash. One of them's got a dozen chickens in the bag, a little chicken cooked about as big as this right in here, at the back of the trailer. Chickens, even got coops up there where they go up and lay their eggs and everything. They got chickens at that one trailer.
Well, I loved to eat chicken and eggs both, but I've never authorized anybody to move any into town, never, if I ask them to move any into town. I promise you.
Okay.
Me and you are good friends, whether you believe it or not. And, and, and the fact that we got some grouchy looking places in town is not your fault or mine. We keep our places respectable, don't we? Very much so.
Well, yes, it is your fault, 'cause you're the mayor and you're the boss, and you're supposed to go by the, you're supposed to go by the ordinances and everything like that, and enforce them. See that these guys, that's, these people that's over the ordinance, see that they enforce it. And you have a clean hand.
You could ask our municipal judge, am I bringing people to court that haven't cleaned up their places? He'll tell you, I am. I, it's hard to make people behave and do things that you want them to do, because they've got used to living this other way, they just don't care.
Well, they either, they either have to change or move out. That's just like these people that's coming in here from these foreign countries. If they don't like it, yeah.
Mr. Lewis, we, we care about you, we're gonna, we want you to get on the agenda.
That's okay.
We want you to come back, we want you to get on the agenda. This lady right here sets it up for me, just ask Angela to put you on the agenda.
I will.
And, and, and tell her what you're gonna talk about, and we'll let you talk, and, and we'll listen to you. And, and we don't mind you coming. Uh, but when you come unannounced, we can't give you thirty minutes each time, it'll be about ten minute, ten minutes limit each time.
That's all right.
Okay.
But, but, uh, you told me tonight that there's nothing you can do, so, uh, there's, uh.
I'm not sure.
There's no need, there's no need in asking for nothing.
No, sir, I, I wouldn't put it that way.
Well, you did. That guy right over there backed you up, said you can't do that, can't do nothing without somebody else's approval.
Well, we, we wanna do it so that we can live with what we do. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Is there any other business tonight? If not, we'll need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
In a second.
I'll say it.
I'll obey. Thank you.
Thank you for.